Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the December 13th Planning Commission to order and ask, let's see, sorry, here. Commissioner Gabbard to go ahead and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, Commissioner Gabbard. And Madam Secretary, could we have a roll call, please?
Please let the record show that all Planning Commissioners are present.
Great, thank you. It moves us on to Item A, Approval of the Minutes. Do I have a motion or any changes? Commissioner Gabbard?
I move to approve the minutes from the, what was it?
November 22nd.
Yeah, November 22nd.
Second.
All right, please vote. All right, that passes 5-0, thank you. Which moves us on to Item B, Public Comments. Do we have anybody wishing to speak tonight on anything that's not on the agenda?
No, Chair Nelson.
Great. I'm going to, there's a way to read that, which moves us to Item C, Consent Calendar Item, Item Number Two, General Plan Consistency, GPC, 21-01 for Salt Creek Beach Park Concession Lease Areas. Do we have a staff report?
This is a request from the County of Orange to provide a general plan consistency finding for the leasing of the concession stands at Salt Creek Beach. So if they're available for you to have any questions.
Okay, any questions from staff? So is it receive and file?
Actually, there is a draft resolution for you to approve.
Just a reminder, it's a consent calendar item, so one motion can approve all of the items on the consent calendar unless there's a request to remove the item from the consent calendar. All you need is a motion to approve the consent calendar.
A motion?
I move that we accept all the items on the consent calendar.
Second.
Please vote. All right, that item passes. Moving on to Item D, Public Hearing, Site Development Permit, SDP 21-0023, Approving a Two-Story Detached 1,200-Square-Foot Accessory Dwelling Unit with a Roof Deck in Conjunction with a Single Family Dwelling, SFD, Continued from November 22nd. So would we reopen the public hearing at this point?
Yes, after the staff report from Danny Geo-Meady, brief staff report, he may open the public hearing.
And just to clarify real quick, technically, the public hearing is still open because it's a continued item, just a procedural.
Perfect.
Good evening, Chair Nelson, fellow commissioners. The project before you this evening, again, is a request to permit a two-story detached 1,200-square-foot accessory dwelling unit with a roof deck in conjunction with a single-family dwelling. The project, as you said, was continued from the previous Planning Commission meeting because the applicant or owner were not present to discuss the project with the commissioners. So again, the site is a vacant 5,000-square-foot lot. It confronts both Seville and Ruby Lantern. It's located east of Golden Lantern between La Cresta Drive and Pacific Coast Highway, and it's zoned as RMF 14, Residential Multi-Family 14, which allows for multiple units to be developed on a lot based on land area. It is surrounded by a mixture of single-family, multifamily, and duplex dwelling units ranging from one to four stories. And on October 14th, 2019, the Director of Community Development approved a minor-site development permit for a 191-square-foot roof deck to be located above a proposed accessory dwelling unit in conjunction with the development of the single-family dwelling on a vacant lot. Soon after that original approval, construction documents were submitted to the city's Building and Safety Department for review and approval, and as it stands, they're currently in plan check. While under the plan review, the City Council approved a new ordinance to modify the zoning code related to accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units pursuant to Ordinance Number 21-06. Section 907-210 of the Dana Point Zoning Code was repealed and replaced at its entirety with the accessory dwelling unit regulations, which then invalidated the subject ADU as proposed. More specifically, the new ordinance states that the maximum building height of a detached ADU is limited to 16 feet. The maximum floor area shall not exceed 1,000 square feet, and no more than one bedroom shall be allowed. And also, no roof decks shall be constructed above the ADU. Alternatively, Section H of the new ADU ordinance also allows the applicant to develop the ADU as designed with approval of the subject site development permit. So this is the site plan. As you can see, there's a single-family dwelling on one side, on Seville Place, and then the proposed ADU located off of Ruby Lantern. The single-family dwelling unit is, I'm sorry, the single-family dwelling is 2,181 square feet. It has four beds and four bathrooms, an attached two-car garage, and it's set back 15 feet, via 15-foot-long driveway located up slope and fronting Seville. And then the ADU to the south along Ruby Lantern is 1,193 square feet. It's a two-story structure with two bedrooms, one office, and three bathrooms. It also has an attached two-car garage and roof deck. The ADU is set back via a 20-foot-long driveway located down slope and fronting Ruby Lantern. Both units maintain a 10-foot separation between them. This is the first and second floor of the single-family dwelling, containing the four bedrooms and four bathrooms, kitchen and living areas, access from the front along Seville Place, and a balcony off the back. And then this is the floor plan for the ADU. First floor contains an office, storage, and laundry areas, as well as a two-car garage. Second floor contains two bedrooms with two attached bathrooms and a great room in the center. This one also has a balcony, and then you can climb the stairs to the roof deck on the upper roof area, and that's 191 square feet. These are the elevations and section drawings. As you can see, the single-family dwelling is located up slope, and the ADU is located down slope. Both the single-family dwelling and the ADU meet the height limits for the respective zoning of 26 feet for a roof pitch between 3/12ths and 6/12ths. This is the table showing compliance with the development standards for both the ADU and the single-family dwelling, with the ADU highlighted in yellow down there. And as you can see, it is compliant with all standards, some requiring the approval of the subject site development permit. That concludes my presentation. Myself, as well as the applicant, is here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you, Danny. Any follow-up questions from Planning Commission? Commissioner Donner, Vice Chair Donner?
Can you tell me, Danny, when the original approval was done? Because the October 19th was the deck approval. So before that was the plan approval?
Correct.
How long ago was that?
Are you saying that, oh, the plan was approved as part of the original site development permit back in 2019? So the roof deck triggers the approval of the site development permit. So that included the construction of the development itself.
So that was approved in October of 2019?
2019, yeah. And I'll add, the roof deck is the only thing that required the approval of a site development permit. Had they not proposed a roof deck back in 2019, it would have been a ministerial approval directly into the building plan check.
Let me ask legal a question. The difference between an ADU and a primary unit, there's two units on this, and they're reasonably close in size and number of bedrooms and parking. What's the difference between an ADU and a single-family?
So from a big-picture concept, the accessory dwelling unit is supposed to be accessory in nature to the primary dwelling. So that would mean theoretically smaller in nature in terms of size and bedrooms. Prior to the latest ADU ordinance that we adopted, we haven't had any real firm standards as to what that means, not only with ADUs but also accessory structures like sheds. So in our ADU ordinance, we did adopt more specific standards to make sure that ADUs remain accessory in nature to the primary dwelling. So that would mean less bedrooms, smaller square footage. Again, that would be 1,000 square feet and two bedrooms. We do allow for some ADUs to exceed those development standards with the site development permit. The number of bedrooms cannot exceed two bedrooms, and the living area cannot exceed 1,200 square feet.
I just wanted to add another couple of things is it cannot be a condo. Basically, the ADU cannot be a separately sold unit, as well as the fact that the law does not allow it to be considered additional density for the purpose of complying with the density of the zone.
And it can't be converted to a condo, is that what you're saying?
That's correct. Cannot be sold separately.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a couple of follow-up questions. I want to go back to, there were a couple of things that came up, my recollection, during the hearing. The owners weren't here, or the applicant, and there's some questions I know that I had. But wanted to, A, find out if staff, if you have gone back with some of the open questions that we had, and had any discussions with the applicant about the office space?
We did. We had discussions with the applicant. They're actually here today in regards to that. And we maintained the two conditions that were revised at the November, was it the November 22nd hearing? With the, we also recommended for the deletion of the proposed condition that was in that memo to require exterior access for the office. So as designed, the applicant agrees that the two conditions are good, the revised ones, and that the downstairs office will be maintained with interior access only.
Okay, could you remind me what the other condition was?
The other condition was that a deed restriction would be recorded on the property stating that it is an ADU. And the, we've conditioned 40, it was 39 and 40. Condition number 40 stated that the downstairs area would be considered an office, and it could never be subdivided or separated into an additional standalone unit, so that it would be maintained, that entire structure as one ADU. It could not be split into, you know, an additional unit off of that.
Okay, perfect. That was it, and then I will wait before we open the public hearing.
Chair Nelson, I also want to remind the commission that one of the other suggested changes was elimination of the exterior stairs to the primary unit. So that was also something that I believe Danny mentioned to the applicant.
Correct, yeah, we did talk about that. And like I said, the applicant is here tonight and can provide an explanation if that's something that you wanted to talk about.
Yep, that's the hope. Okay, great, thank you. Any follow-up questions before we welcome the applicant up?
Yes, Danny, on Item 40, is that also deed restricted as well as 39?
That's just a condition. It's not deed restricted, but that potentially could be something we could add to a deed restriction. Our city attorney might be able to chime in on that, but there is not a specific deed restriction in there for Condition 40.
All right, great. I'm going to open the public hearing request.
Chair, just real quick, maybe I've got the two projects confused, but didn't we also talk about eliminating any shower in the downstairs adjacent to the office?
So we had talked about that, but upon further review, we determined the condition wouldn't be necessary, or requiring that would not be necessary, that condition that was, I think, believe that was placed in the other project that was on the last hearing, due to the fact that that one exceeded the square footage that was required for the ADU.
I just thought it was because we were trying to eliminate the potential for this becoming a downstairs bedroom with a walk-in closet.
Correct, but the square footage of the total, the total square footage of the ADU, because it was less than 1,200 square feet, it was different from that, the other ADU which exceeded that. Yeah, this particular unit, although we're, it will be maintained as an office, it is conditioned that it won't be subdivided into another additional unit.
Go ahead. Sorry, Danny, I have one more question. On the chart that shows compliant with standard, for an example, it says height limit 16 feet. It's proposed to be 26 feet. You're saying it meets the standard, so.
With the approval of the subject site development permit, it's within the height for the RMF, the underlying zoning district, as it's located within the buildable footprint.
Okay, great. So I'm going to open the public hearing and ask the applicant to come on up to the microphone if they could. I have a couple, I think, one question myself, and then, you know, feel free to, get right over there, please. Yeah, so if you could help me, so one thing, when we, and appreciate you coming tonight, there was a question that I had that we couldn't answer because you weren't here, and that is, on the primary unit, there is a set of stairs and an access to the second floor. Trying to understand the need for that based on the fact that you already have a front door and a rear door, and so it seems, I'm interested, why would you add that?
Yeah, okay, so this is actually the second property of the, for the owner. The original property in City of Dana Point that was built, designed and built back in 2017, this is actually their second property. And unfortunately, the first property that they had, the way of the access turned out to be not as pleasant. You know, Danny has been there a couple of times, and they recently did the adjustment so that the access becomes easier for them because they're approaching the age of 80s. So for them to climb up and down the stairs is going to be, I would say, not pleasant, and that's how they feel on their first property. And so they hoped on the second property that they have, they can have a better access, less climbing the stair back and, you know, up and down for, you know, for their, you know, getting to the building and out. So the purpose, and also, they are envisioning a building for multi, you know, for their children and grandchildren to be able to unite, at least maintaining some separation or privacy for themselves, so that, you know, the kids or they can, they can, you know, do whatever they want on the second story, but maintaining themselves on the first story. So the entrance having, going, the stairs going to the second story is for, mainly for the guests, you know, going into, you know, into the living space or living room area, which is creating a more pleasant, rather than going into a, you know, kind of like a hallway and then going in through the, that's what happened to their first property. They have to go down into a hallway and then stepping, you know, probably go up 10 steps, going up to the second story. So that's why they're trying to maintain, you know, the access easier for them to go in and out at the same time for the guests or the, you know, or their friends can be able to go to the second story and on the living, you know, living room area. So that's the purpose.
Okay, I appreciate that. I don't have any other questions. I don't know if you had anything else that you wanted to share with the Planning Commission?
I just want to add more thing is, actually, I know it is unfortunate, this project is still a vacant lot for three years. And I know, I know it's tough because we are in a threshold of adopting the new ADU, you know, criteria. And, you know, to be honest, this, actually, the project is already being, I would say, approved by the grading department as well as the building departments. And now we are back to the planning, so just want to reiterate about that. So basically, just holding, the building departments and the grading department, they already got all green lights for the structure.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other speakers tonight? Okay, great. Bring it back to the Planning Commission for discussion and a vote. Anybody want to start off, or?
Given what the rest of this hearing is going to be about, I really think that the project would be approved anyway if, once we, once we adopt the ordinances that we've got on the calendar today. So I'm going to support it just so we can, you know, they can get this project moving.
Commissioner Opal?
Thank you. I'm supportive of the project as well, thankful that the applicant was able to come this evening, respond to the questions that we have, and look forward to seeing this moving forward.
Great, thank you. Vice Chair Donner?
I'm also in support of the project.
Thank you.
The fact that the ADUs were developed in order for families to be able to have children or parents occupy, then I would say, assuming we deed restrict as, Item 40, then I would be supportive of the project, assuming it can't be a condo conversion and the families there.
Great. Yeah, I concur. I think, you know, based on the additional conditions and the changes that were agreed to, I, as I said in the previous meeting, I didn't have an issue with the project per se, I had a couple of questions, but given it's in a multifamily district, it's appropriate for the site, it fits in well with the surrounding community, and, you know, for those reasons, I'm in full support. So I'll make the motion to approve this item. I gotta go back and look at what number it was here. The motion is to approve Site Development Permit, SDP 21-0023, Approving a Two-Story Detached 1,200-Square-Foot Accessory Dwelling Unit with a Roof Deck in Conjunction with a Single Family Dwelling. That's my motion. And we have everything already captured. But it's in, it's not in the condition? Okay, what, if you want to amend my motion, just add that?
Yes, I'd like to make an amendment to your motion to add to Item 40 deed restriction that would be enforced against future owners of the property, and it would run with the land.
I would be fine with that. Got a second?
I second.
Okay, great. All right, that item passes. Congratulations, thank you for coming back, appreciate it. All right, moving on to Item Four, General Plan Amendment, GPA 20-0003, To Update the 2021-2029 Housing Element and Public Safety Element. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, we do. Belinda Dynas is here tonight, as well as our consultant, Colin Drucker.
Thank you, Brenda. Good evening, Chair Nelson, Planning Commissioners, and members of the public. My name is Belinda Dynas, Principal Planner, and I am pleased to welcome back Colin Drucker from Placeworks, who is the city's consultant and lead project manager on the city's preparation of the housing element and public safety element update to the city's general plan. Colin is here to provide a presentation on the drafts, and I will go ahead and turn it over to Colin. I'll actually be controlling the slides from my end.
Well, good to be back. If you can go to the next slide. I'm here mostly tonight to give you a status update on where everything stands. You know, we've been going, it's the kind of month of cheer and holiday and housing element reviews, so one doesn't really go with the other. But I'm going to give you a quick recap on the housing strategy and the changes that we're making to the public safety element, and then get your direction for the next steps. So just to give you a quick recap, in 2020 to 2021, we reviewed all the slew of new laws, understood how it applies to Dana Point, tried to make sure we customize it so that it's appropriate for you, do public outreach, stakeholder interviews, Planning Commission, City Council meetings, coming back to you, to the general public for workshops, staff is conducting kind of pop-up events, and then posting the draft elements for review and comment, and we have gotten some public comment. Then, in the summer to fall of this year, we submitted officially to HCD, got that first round of review through, also to CAL FIRE for the public safety element. And then we've been making changes based on some of those comments and direction. And so we've gotten some additional comments from the public, and we're looking at 2022 towards the final adoption ultimately from City Council. So I'm going to quickly speed through kind of highlights of the city's housing strategy. There are these six goals that form the city's housing strategy, and they go anywhere from giving new housing, to helping people who can't afford existing housing, to people who can't afford to rehabilitate or improve their homes, to preserving existing housing that is affordable or that is good condition, and then promoting fair housing, equal housing opportunity. The first goal, they're dealing with producing a variety and diversity of housing types. This really gets at looking at the state's RENA, that future growth allocation, and the city's sites inventory to satisfy that and accommodate, and make sure that that sites inventory is maintained throughout the entirety of the planning period, and looking at the density bonus in ADUs, the role that those tools can play in expanding capacity and opportunity for variety of housing types. The alternative sites, the city, some may be painfully familiar with the good effort that didn't quite get RENA credit, but it was an excellent example of the city putting forth funds to produce housing out of an existing housing project, and that's something that hopefully could be replicated if it's an opportunity. We have it as a program. If the opportunity arises, great. If not, we've set forth a clear timeline so that the city allocates its funding appropriately in the future. And the, you can go to the next slide. So looking at assisting people to access lower-income housing, especially existing residents, continuing their, the city's agreement with the County of Orange to provide Section Eight, also housing choice vouchers, and making sure that the city, how it changes from typical patterns, is looking at where housing voucher usage is currently low in the city, where overpayment is also high. So some more targeted outreach efforts in order to expand the use of those vouchers. Also, the city obviously partners with the Mary Erickson Community Housing efforts to fund some affordable housing through an association with the hotel development, looking at the feasibility of expanding that to other hotels, and evaluating the Enluffy program to see whether or not is that the most effective program? Is there an alternative out there, or is the current option the city has of approaching on a case-by-case basis really the best option? And then the city joins the Orange County Housing Trust, which is still kind of coming to bear, and the idea is to take this collective effort to produce better results throughout Orange County, and the city's part is to maintain, obviously, the city's interest and to try and foster more housing opportunities in the city. Then removing constraints to housing, the states kind of jumped in and said, hey, SB 35 is the legislation that said if, if the market is not producing enough market-rate housing, and if the kind of below-market-rate sector is not producing enough affordable housing, then some measures kick in that say, okay, now certain types of housing that include either 10% or 50% affordable housing just become by right. It's not, not something that's going to be commonplace, every, you know, project that's not going to come up is going to be by right, but it's a way to kind of grease the wheels in case the market's not producing, try and stimulate it some more. Then on supportive housing, that is some reflecting some laws that passed that tries to make sure that different types of supportive housing is treated just as any other types of housing and permitted by right in certain zones. And then low-barrier navigation centers are, if you, if you've read any of the reasons why some people who experience homelessness don't use emergency shelters, it's because, for example, they can't bring their pets, they can't bring their family, they can't store more than like a backpack's worth of things, they don't feel safe. So there's this new model that's, that's been in the works over the last few years called a low-barrier navigation center. And low barrier means all of those things I just mentioned, they try to address those. So they have onsite services, onsite security, more so than normal. You can bring in your pets, all of these things to try and encourage people not only to have shelter for overnight, but to try and transition them into permanent housing more to connect them to services. So those types of uses have to be permitted by right in more zones than emergency shelters. Goal four, conserving what you do have as existing affordable stock, so continuing to focus those rehabilitation funds into low-resource areas. So these are areas of the city where they don't have quite the access to the resources at other parts, and trying to still maintain consistent code enforcement in all of the areas, again, prioritizing those areas that are less fortunate. Monitoring, and goal five, and these are just highlights, this isn't all of them, obviously. These are just the highlights. So monitoring, all of the assisted projects are currently preserved in perpetuity. It's the best out of any city we work with, it's a great approach. You never have to worry about whether or not it's at risk, and that's something that's, we've sort of added as a policy to encourage that in the future. And then lastly, fair housing, this is the, this has always been in the housing element, but there is a greater effort. but there is a greater effort and a greater focus placed, and it's a combination of federal and state laws intermingling with each other, and it's really pushing, especially in housing elements, for the city to analyze, to a strong degree, the pattern of fair housing, or patterns of segregation, or other types of differences in opportunities, and to try to take steps towards evening out some of those patterns and making sure people have access to fair housing. So that's why in this housing element, you'll see a fairly extensive, you know, it's almost like it went back to grad school, and you start writing about the patterns of the city and the history of it and how it came to be, and we're still working with the state, they're still looking for a lot of information, they're still evolving. If you look at other jurisdictions, down in San Diego, they kind of, they got off easy because it was right when the law was passed that their housing elements were due. So any jurisdictions in San Diego, you'll see it's like a Cliff Notes version of what we have to do now. And so jurisdictions now, it is a much more extensive analysis, and then it also has to have connections directly into the programs. That's the housing element. A real, real quick run through that. The safety element is much shorter. You can go to the next slide. So the safety element is one of those required elements, just like housing, and it looks at both natural and human-generated hazards, and takes into consideration the existing documentations and analyses you've already done. There's the Orange County Hazard Mitigation Plan, the city's emergency plan, and then the recent sea level rise vulnerability assessment. So the main changes in the law that we updated reflect increased requirements for flood and wildfire hazard analysis. So in the flooding, you have increased coordination responsible with responsible agencies and looking at risks. And then you also have that issue with the fire. Now, people don't generally associate Dana Point with fire hazards, but there are certain parts of the city, and you see mapped here, where there are either some very high fire hazards, very zones, pretty much developed anyway, but still has some of that hazards, and then what we call ember zones. So this is something that we added in there in coordination with the state, where, you know, due to the winds, you can have those fire hazards carried over into areas that normally aren't considered at risk. And then the most substantial part, at least in the law, is an evaluation of making the city safer and more resilient in the face of future more hazardous weather conditions. And so we've inserted a vulnerability assessment that goes in tandem with the public safety element, and added, to a certain degree, some bolstering of the goals and policies. You know, it sounds like at first, when you read the law, you have to practically create a whole nother element. In reality, you look at the safety element, and it's really just strengthening those to say, what if things are a little bit worse than we think? What is the city in a good position to help its residents, its businesses, get back on their feet? So I'll give you a couple of slides, just telling you what the state's been telling us. And so in June to August, again, kind of that summertime, we had that first 60-day round of review. Anytime we submit to the state a draft, they get 60 days to review it. And then we went back after making some revisions, and in October through December, we just talked to them this morning, or we'll get an official letter. I'll show you quick highlights of what we were able to hear today. We didn't want to delay talking to you, though. And then the idea is in 2022, we're going to be getting that final certification, which really ultimately doesn't happen until after you adopt. On the safety element, we went and coordinated with CAL FIRE in the summer and into kind of the fall a little bit, and then went for the formal review the last couple of months, and they found no problems with our public safety element draft, and you're free to kind of move on. There's no recommendations. That's what normally happens, is that they, the Board of Forestry gives you recommendations. We don't have any to consider because we addressed everything they were concerned about. And then looking again at 2021, 2022 for adoption. So for HCD, again, the official letter, the preview's coming this Friday. We're going to get the official letter. And I will tell you that in the last, I've participated in the last three cycles, so it's a little bit over 20 years worth, and it used to be kind of you could get housing elements through. If you got it through in one round, you were really good, but it wasn't all that unusual. Two rounds, if you took more than two rounds, it was kind of like, well, what's, they're not agreeing with something. Now, if the HCD has a tracker, there's no jurisdiction in Orange County and very few in Southern California that are certified and in compliance right now, because it's just, in part because of the fair housing assessments, that's just brand new, and they're still trying to figure out what they want to do with it and what they want to require. And then the read is just bigger everywhere and all of the new laws. So it's taking, almost all of the jurisdictions are taking three rounds of review to get through. We feel like we're in a pretty good position. They were really identifying relatively minor edits on how we can better explain some of the history and the patterns that they're seeing, looking at the sites, making sure that we're providing the evidence that they need so that they can check it off, that, okay, this has some real redevelopment potential, and then looking at strategies for how the city can be a little bit more proactive on some of the programs. On the CAL FIRE comments, they were minimal. It was really just kind of explicitly connecting the local hazard mitigation plan to the safety element. They're just pushing that through so that there is legally that connection, and that's in part to help ensure that the city gets access to some emergency funds if it needs. And then those ember zones that I referenced, mapping those, and then revising the existing policies a little bit to increase fire protection, make sure that you can encourage development to occur outside of them as much as possible, not really an issue for Dana Point, and then they really liked the weed abatement and vegetation hazard reduction program. They wanted to see that continued. So the next steps really are for the housing element, what we're here to seek your direction on. You could recommend approval, and the key thing is that we haven't gotten that formal letter until Friday. We believe the changes are relatively minor, and so the request is to potentially make a recommendation, granting the staff the authority to make changes as necessary to address HCD comments, and obviously, if anything comes about that is substantive, then staff would come back to planning commission prior to going to city council. With the safety element, no real concerns, or if forestry is happy, we're happy, so that one's safe to move forward. And then if anyone has any information after they read this, they can go to the website. Said he's been maintaining a lot of the documents on there, and available for questions. Turn it back over to Belinda.
Great, thank you. Any questions from commission? I do have a couple real quick ones for you. On the fire element, or on the public safety element relative to the fire and CAL FIRE, you had put those maps up that had the ember zones. So can you help me understand or clarify the difference between CAL FIRE maps and OCFA maps, and how they connect in our city, and what the implications are, if there are any, to including CAL FIRE maps in our safety element?
Yeah, the CAL FIRE maps, they're the, it's basically the state source of fire mapping data. So for the general plan, safety element, you have to include that data. It's generally consistent with Orange County's mapping. They just recently did some updates with the CAL FIRE maps, so there can be some inconsistency, but within a little bit of time, we generally find that they become consistent with each other.
So is, okay, I think that helps. So the addition of this, or is this an update to our existing maps?
Yes. It's an update to your existing safety element. So you're free to maintain different fire hazard maps in coordination with Orange County Fire Authority.
So we're not changing anything then at this point? We're just updating?
No, this is, yeah, this is long-term fire planning, general plan-level policy work.
Okay. And then going to the resilience on the, or the resilience component of dealing with climate change and sea level rise and stuff, what, how do we address, how do we become resilient on a coastline we can't protect? How do we address that? Or do we just, is it retreat and, that doesn't seem resilient, I guess?
Yeah, I mean, in part, it, really, we did not contradict the assessment that you've already had underway, so we took that in consideration, and then layer on it some additional policies and analysis that talks about ways you can deal with, let's say, evacuation routes, or activities and programs you can undertake after a disaster. So sea level rise is obviously not a one-time potential disaster. That's a long-term, just your coastline changes. Yes, that is not. We have not yet found out a way, and general plans are not a sufficient tool to identify a way to, and what to do with the land next to areas of the coast.
Okay, especially with like Beach Road, we've got, you know, significant issues right now, and, okay, so that would be something that's done in a higher-level policy, or?
It's something that's done more at a strategic level. I think that whatever the next step is for the sea level rise assessment, we didn't want the safety element to kind of get over its skis on that.
Perfect. All right, great. I think that was, that was it for questions. Thank you. Anybody else? All right. With that, we'll open the public hearing. Do we have speakers? Great. We've got two speakers tonight. First up is Rona Henry. You can come up, introduce yourself, and you have three minutes. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Rona Henry. I am here as Chair of Welcoming Neighbors Home, which is a Ministry of Tapestry Unitarian Universalist congregation. Members of our congregation live here in Dana Point, and we focus on promoting affordable housing. We've submitted two detailed written public comments regarding Dana Point's housing element, and I want to say we really appreciated how responsive the city has been in terms of considering our comments and thoroughly responded to them. Thank you. We're glad to see that the staff will be adjusting the site inventory with respect to the schoolyard property to include 15% affordable, which we assume means that they will allocate 50, 55 units of affordable unit to be affordable instead of 38. As you move forward in your negotiations with the developer, we request that you ask for extremely low and very low affordability for those units, rather than just low income and moderate income, because frankly, low and moderate is very close to market rate. We'd also point out that the Del Prado property is in an area where people are traditionally lower-income, so please keep in mind any displacement issues with any new development there. Given the city's track record in the fifth cycle, when, arena cycle, when above moderate income production outpaced lower-income housing development by a ratio of 45 to 1, we see the sixth cycle housing element as a wonderful opportunity to proactively plan for a more balanced approach to housing. This is the reason why we're highlighting so many programs that we thought could help incentivize affordable housing development here. We hope as you move forward that you will look seriously towards adopting policies such as inclusionary housing, plus take actions to attract affordable housing developers to this community. And when you're considering applications from market-rate developers, we hope that you will negotiate hard for housing that people earning under $50,000 can afford. That's the retail workers, in-home workers, medical assistants, janitorial staff, et cetera, who we've come to understand as our essential staff. There's a dearth of housing that is affordable for these folks, and thus they have to travel long distances, which only adds to traffic problems. We look forward to monitoring how the housing element gets implemented here, and again, I want to thank the staff and the consultants for very carefully considering our public comments. Thank you.
Thank you. And next up, Hoyan.
Good evening, Commissioners, longtime NLC and staff. Happy holidays. So, yeah, Chair, so glad you asked about resilience. I feel like I'm speaking to the wrong commission here, but I don't know if there's a better place at a city to talk about this. Yeah, Beach Road is just a classic example for the city. In 2019, Coastal Commission got a presentation from a UCLA guy, and he talked about aggressive building codes to fight against climate change and the sea level rise. And at the time, the whole RENA thing, everybody was only talking about it, guessing, right? So now this is the truth. And so, I mean, with this huge number, there's just a variety of things we have to deal with. Building code, since it's kind of under your scope too. On building code, I just want to say, there is such a trend of building electrification or electric buildings, because we want to get rid of natural gas. We know methane is a bad thing, really bad for climate change. So I don't know where Dana Point, which committee, department, we can use it as a starting point to address that. And there's other greenhouse gas reduction measures we can tackle. I'm not saying that the planning commission should start working on climate change plan, climate action plan, but you know, that's how it goes. So I just hope that anybody has a voice, two city council members can be my echo to some degree, and we need to work across departments, commissions, committees, and we should start doing something about climate change. I mean, if you're sick, one thing to take pills, do what doctors tell you to do. Another thing is really to develop this healthy lifestyle, which is this whole climate resiliency, climate action plan, that kind of thing. Okay, thank you so much.
Great, thank you. Appreciate it. With that, we've got one more. Abigail Marigold, please.
Hello. This is my first time ever doing this, so, okay, here we go. First off, I'm here mostly just to learn and listen. So I appreciate the work being done in the housing, in the city, and in our state. In the past 12 months, I've become not a Dana Point resident, got married in the harbor, and have enjoyed countless community events here in the past summer. There is so much I've come to love about Dana Point, and it didn't take long to make it feel like home. My husband and I have come to love it so much, we hope to purchase a house here one day. We currently live in a little triplex in the Lantern District, just south of, or just between Golden Lantern and the Paws. I particularly, particularly love the diversity of housing with anything from the six-unit plus apartments to the tastefully designed single-family homes. It brings a variety of people together to enjoy the same local amenities, such as the farmer's market or local parks. Not only do I hope to one day buy a house, but maybe even one of those triplexes or add an ADU in my backyard, although it still feels a long way off. I believe that can be achieved through these goals and these planning, planning and housing elements. So, and for myself, I'm, my husband and I are two working professionals. My husband's an engineer, and I'm an architectural job captain, and we still find it somewhat unrealistic to purchase a home in the city anytime soon. So if that's true for us, I can only imagine, and I relate to those, those people that are in the service industry that are really not as fortunate as me and my husband. So as all these goals evolve, I just want to say that I hope that attainable housing for me and my husband, as well as affordable housing for low and extremely low-income families are at the forefront of the efforts. So that's all. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Good job for your first time. All right, with that, I'll bring it back to the commission for discussion and direction.
I don't have any comments. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Gabbard?
I just want to commend staff and consultant team on the work that you've done and the time and effort that you've put into something that is so bureaucratic, it's off the charts. I just applaud everything that you guys are doing.
Vice Chair Donner?
Yeah, I'd like to add to that. The fact that Principal Planner Belinda Dennis completed the rezoning of Doheny Village, that element will help us dramatically without having to rezone things, and so the housing element, and also, I'd like to correct the 45 to 1 ratio because of the 17 units at Silver Lantern that were pointed out in your response to this, this organization, Welcome Home. And I would also like to congratulate the consultant and Belinda on the, on the job they did with this housing unit. It's very difficult, and the response that you provided to the, to the comments were, were well done. Thank you.
Mr. DeGrae?
I echo the same sentiments as Commissioner Kabat. I think staff and consultants have done a great job in bringing this element to, to this stage. So, thank you.
All right. Well, I will echo most of the sentiments, especially as it relates to staff and your work on this. However, I'm going to deviate a little bit on my comments because I'm not... I find this process, if we're not voicing our concerns with the process itself, a process that is wasteful for everybody's time, but also in believing that there's an outcome that will result from some of the policies that are in many ways told or forced down upon cities. We're in the sixth cycle, so we're in the worst we've ever been in housing crisis. The fact that we're the sixth cycle and we're still here may suggest that what we're doing isn't working. But when you start to go back in the history of housing, specifically recent history, you could start in 2016 and look at all of the legislation. I think we heard about a couple of the pieces tonight, SB 35, SB 330. And there's a list of those. SB 9 is going to be next. We're going to talk about that. But there's this legislative approach to creating housing affordability. And unfortunately, what I've experienced and what I've learned and what is now obvious after years of legislative attempts to control pricing on a private industry is it's not going to work. You can't force affordability through legislation. What you could do in many respects, and I would be, I'd love to see a city attempt it, is to remove most of the legislation and most of the barriers. I mean, section, or number two, where we talk about development or incentives to help development of housing, the next section is government constraints. And then we add in LUF fees and requirements for the future to fix ills of the past. That's a constraint and that actually has a material impact. And I know there's a belief that developers are, you know, probably, you know, lighting hundred dollar bills on fire and cigars and, and rich. But the reality is, you know, the land they're buying is the same land that everybody else is buying and it's very expensive. And then you couple that with exhaustive regulations that continue to try to fix again, you know, irresponsible patterns of development in the past, balkanized development, stuff that doesn't make sense. We can't fix that with the future. It has to be a much broader approach, I think. And, and so that's my general overarching comment. I do want to make one suggestion that would be included in the recommendation to the city council and that is that we do not include a citywide LUF. We have the Mellow Act. It covers the most expensive properties in the, in the county as well as on our coastline. And I think adding an addition or even suggesting that we're going to do that, because I'm not, would never support BMR fees. We could talk about requirements and, and whether or not we should have a, a level of participation. But to implement a program or even suggest one, I don't know. If we took a poll up here, how many of us would be supportive of that? I want to make sure we're not leading people on with something that may not be, something that the city council would even suggest moving forward. So I would add that as a discussion item and a policy item for the council to discuss. And I just caution that, you know, any solution that leverages the market rate development community is going to lower production. I mean, and you can look at the last six or seven years of production have gone down every single year across the board. And it's not for the lack of need and it's not for the lack of willing renters and buyers. It's, it's too expensive, it's too complex and land is, is too expensive. And those things, we can't fix by adopting an updated housing element unfortunately, other than maybe removing some of those constraints and I'd be all for that. But I don't think that's on the table tonight. So those are my comments. And I would recommend, you know, actually I'll just hold back and let you guys, somebody come up with a motion if you have one. Oh, go ahead.
You want, you want the motion?
Yeah, please.
Yeah, I, I move that we recommend that the general plan amendment GPA, GPA 20 dash 0003 to update the 2021 through 2029. Housing element and public safety element be forwarded to city council recommending approval with the caveat that, or with the recommendation that the, in lieu of fee, only apply to those areas impacted by the Mellow Act.
I'd second that. I think I might have screwed up on my screen over here. I can't see the vote. Up there it is. Okay, that item passes. Great work. Thank you for your patience with me ranting up here. Okay, moving on to Zone Tax Amendment ZTA 21 dash 0001 to regulate single-family residential duplexes and multi, or in municipal code amendment to regulate urban lotsmiths pursuant to California Senate Bill SB 9.
Yes, I'll be providing the staff report tonight. SB 9 is a law that's going to be going into effect beginning January 1st, 2022. The proposed regulations are intended to address that new law. The staff report did provide a recommendation that the planning commission consider the amendments and to forward those on to the city council. However, upon looking at the law as well as the proposal, our recommendation tonight is for the planning commission to receive the staff report, conducts discussion and open the public hearing with the potential of continuing the item to your January 24th meeting. And if the planning commission also sees that there might be a benefit of having continued discussion with staff prior to that meeting, perhaps even developing an ad hoc committee of the planning commission. What we're seeing is this law, although I think Jennifer is the author of the, of the regulations is, has done a great job of trying to simplify things. There's lots of, lot of components to it that I think would benefit from the planning commission's input. So with that, I'll provide the presentation. Might need to do something here. Play. It says it's playing. One second, please. So I can go on and begin the presentation. So Senate Bill 9 is very similar to the accessory dwelling unit ordinance, but it has two components. And the first is the ability to establish two units in a, in a single-family zone. Different from the accessory dwelling unit is that SB 9 only applies to single-family districts and that ADUs can actually be applied to any district that allows for single-family homes. So the two component issue is basically that allows for, on a single-family lot, that that lot can allow for now two units. The next component to SB 9 is ability to actually subdivide a single-family lot into two. So the end result could be that it would result in four units. So what we see as potential issues for our community is that it allows for duplexes in single-family zones and that, you know, we currently have about 30% of our neighborhoods are multifamily and duplexes. So that would make, have a possibility of changing the character of our neighborhoods. And unintended consequences such as parking impacts, neighborhood look and feel and density. So the ordinance was developed in a way that tries to address those. And am I able to change it still? You'll change it? Okay, next slide, please. So SB 9 in Dana Point, the law does allow us to create objective development standards in that we can establish height setbacks and also size of those units. And also we can prohibit ADUs to ensure that no, no more than four units could be created on a subdivided lot. And also, no unit shall be a short-term rental. And the Coastal Act still applies, so coastal permit will still be required, but we cannot require a public hearing. Next slide, please. So the proposed ordinance identifies a series of development standards, again, very similar to our AD ordinance. And in compliance, what the state law allows us to provide is four-foot setbacks in the rear and side. The front yard setback would be consistent with the underlying zone, so that would be typically about 20 feet. Maximum height of the new unit would be 16 feet, maximum size of 800 square feet. And one parking space would be required for one unit. So this is different from ADU where parking can be waived in some cases. One parking space would be required. And also, if a new unit is being constructed, the primary unit, no more than 25% of the exterior walls could be, would be permitted to be demolished in order to establish that new unit. And if that existing non-conforming structure, it, it, the structure is non-conforming, a site development permit would be required. And lastly, a deed restriction would be required. Again, in implementing that no short-term rental will be required, owner occupancy and that another provision that law allows us to do is requiring that unit to be very low or low income. And consistent with our existing low-income affordability, we do, would recommend that be in perpetuity. And next slide related to the urban lot split. So again, this is a provision that currently does require a public hearing, but in this case with state law, ministerially, we would be required to allow a single unit parcel to be subdivided. And then that would be allowed to be no more, no less than 1200 square feet. And of that parcel, it should be no less than 40% of the original parcel. And we also include some provisions related to lot line regulations to ensure the lot lines are formed in a way that aren't wonky and, you know, we still want to have some consistency in the parallel lines. So some creative regulations are placed on the, in the ordinance that controls that. And there is a way to ensure that original lots that are previously subdivided, the SB 9 cannot be split again. And so that's the urban lot splits. The next slide is basically our recommendation. As I mentioned, tonight, we just wanted to open up this for discussion and conduct the public hearing for the members of the public that are here with intent of continuing to January 24th. This does result in the state law being enacted prior to us having the ordinance, but we feel that it's in best interest to ensure that our regulations are done in a way that makes sense for our community. So with that, I have completed my presentation.
All right, thank you. Do we have any questions for staff?
So all of our communities are designed with capacity issues, whether it's sewer, water, street, street whiffs, they're all impacted by how many, how many homes you have in a neighborhood. How are we addressing that?
So in developing the ADU ordinance, we did contact the VAR district to see if there were any capacity issues. And it wasn't a clear distinction that we had any issues related to sewer and water supply. And our roadways also, there are errors capacity within our roadways to allow for the increase of density that could be created by SB 9 and the ADUs. There is the provision is allowed in the state law that states that the building official has the ability to deny an SB 9 unit if there are health and safety concerns. I understand that, that provision is a pretty high bar to be able to demonstrate, but nevertheless, it is something that's available in the state law.
Any questions, Vice Chair? No? Commissioner Dinger? Nope. All right. Do we have any speakers tonight? All right, so we're going to open the public hearing. All right, and we've got Hoiyan.
I hope, I hope you can bear with me with my questions. So as I, I heard the part that people can split a lot. So a, one single-family lot now can become two lots. And you said prohibit four-plex. I'm not sure what that means. But I was under the impression that currently a single-family lot can be split and I have two, so have four units on each half lot, which means it's eight units on one lot. Is that, that's not true? Okay. So this is effective from January 1st? Does that means people can start splitting the lot on the first business day here in January? And is that right? Okay. I, sorry, I, I was just hoping there could be more discussions. This is very interesting, very important. I just feel like I need to learn a lot. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, we go back for questions, comments. I certainly have a whole list. But I won't start if somebody else wants to. Vice Chair?
We agree. It's very complicated. And we, we've looked at it and it's unintended consequences. And I think it was developed for, for areas that have existing mass transit with high density existing. And, and I don't think it was designed for the kind of communities that many of the communities have. And so it really eliminates a single-family dwelling zoning. And, and I don't, I don't think that any of us can quite understand all the reasons behind it. But to have no public hearings also says that that, that doesn't seem constitutional. But, but it is going to be the law, whatever, whatever they say it is at this point. So we just have to deal with it.
So I, I have a lot of concerns. You know, it's, in many ways, I think SB 9 is a, in its infancy was, was a well-thought idea, but it wasn't conceptualized very well and through the process got picked apart to a point where it's sort of more complicated in many cases than it's probably worth even trying to apply for SB 9. But I, I have a whole host of things I think we need to discuss before we make a recommendation to the city council on this. Given the implications that are in here, I think Commissioner Donor, Vice Chair Donor, you raised the most significant one is, once we're done with this, that's it. We don't get another bite at the apple. And I think making sure that we push forward objective standards, you know, following the guidelines of SB 9 so that we can address those types of issues ahead of time as opposed to waiting a few years for a few of these to be built and start to find out. We didn't think through some of the implications of, you know, this state mandate. So a few things I think that I would want to make sure we have on the list to discuss in detail relate to restrictions on affordable housing and make sure that we understand what that means as a commission. That's a, a critical element. The provisions for demolition, I think I want to have a much more depth of understanding in what that means and where it applies, where it doesn't apply. The, there's many policy items in here, but I think recommending the right policy is important. So we look at issues such as occupancy requirements on, on the standard duplex, so not utilizing the lot stand, the lot split provisions, but only the first provision which allows the duplex. Whether or not it's appropriate to restrict that to owners only. I think there's a question that I have relative to affordability that if you have an owner that can afford to split it, they probably won't meet the owner or the affordability restrictions that would come with, with our current draft here. And so that's something we should, we should certainly talk through. Setbacks are, I think, the most complex, given that the state provided very specific direction relative to what setbacks we can and can't do. And I, I think that coupled with our height limits, we have to, I believe we have to be extremely careful how we restrict the, so we don't end up with buildings covering, you know, 100% of our properties and providing no outdoor space, no green space, no canopies. All of those things are things I think we have to think about as a commissioner before we recommend anything. Size requirement is certainly something we should be discussing. I think it addresses your issue with capacity and whether or not 800 feet is the right number, 850. And then also thinking through, you know, today it could be two 800-foot units or 825-foot, whatever we settle on. But if they lot split that, it could be four. And so I think we have to think through the different macerations of how this could play out in a short, in the short term, but then also the long run before advising the city council on this. You know, bedroom counts are something we should think about. We do have, you know, ADUs already and JADUs. Those don't go away. We do have, you know, ADUs already and GA-ADUs, those don't go away under some of the scenarios here, that that should be understood. And, and then, you know, we get into the more complex stuff like lot splits, and whether they're parcel maps where we're drawing lines versus condo maps, I think those are things that we may need to get the engineering team to help us understand some of the components of that. I think that captures a high level of my thoughts. I would, I would certainly be open to being part of a small ad hoc group, I know we have very little time, but I think there's, this is, I wouldn't feel like we were doing our job as a commission who's here to advise our city council on planning matters if we don't do a robust, you know, deep dive on this and really understand it at a, you know, in the weeds, and then bring it back for more high-level discussions. So I'd volunteer to be part of an ad hoc if the commission thought that was a good idea, and would welcome any one of you to join up if you're interested. But those are my thoughts and my comments tonight.
So I'll make the motion that we, we have an ad hoc committee, look at this with, with staff so that we can come back on the 24th and have more concrete answers to, not only the chair's questions, but, you know, fully, make sure we've had this fully fleshed out for city council when, when we're presented to them.
Did you volunteer?
He did, I think.
Congratulations.
Second.
Would you want to second that?
Second.
Okay. There we go. Perfect. Thank you. Item passes, welcome to the ad hoc committee. All right, that moves us on to our final few items, old business. I think we've got a quick update on short-term rentals, or, or we're getting close?
Yeah, we are getting close. I think we have developed the parameters and shared that with the sub, put some meat to those parameters. And we'll have to reassess the schedule, I think we were planning on bringing it back to the Planning Commission on January 24th, so we'll have to see about the workload and see if we can conquer both SB 9 and short-term rentals at night. So, to be determined.
Perfect. And that brings us to new business, I don't see any new business, any staff reports tonight?
I'd like to introduce our new staff member, we have DJ Satoris. He is our new senior administrative assistant, he's going to be filling in where Allison is now, because Allison was recently promoted to management analyst. So moving on up in our world, and then we have a happy new staff member.
Welcome to the team. All right, with that, we'll go to Commissioner Comments. Just start at the far end and work our way around. Commissioner Gabbard?
No, I just want to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Just want to echo Commissioner Gabbard's comment on wishing everyone a happy holidays.
Yep, me too, I think I did, I have to tell you, I love the Festivus Pole. It's, you know, my generation certainly appreciates Festivus and the feats of strength and airing of the grievances, so I saw that in our staff kitchen tonight, and we had a laugh. So I wish, I want to wish everybody a very happy holidays and a great New Year.
I'll echo the same comments, and also congratulations, Allison, great job, looking forward to your.
Well, I won't be left behind, I echo the same sentiments, and wish everybody a happy holidays and a very Happy New Year, and congratulations, Allison, and welcome aboard.
Thank you. All right, thank you. With that, I'm going to close the meeting. And the next meeting will be held on January 10th of 2022, beginning at 6:00 PM or soon thereafter here in the city council chambers at 33282 Golden Lantern, Suite 210. Thank you.